I think in the interest of time, we'll get started and Dennis will be joining us shortly. I'd like to call to order this meeting of, the special meeting of the Urbana City Council for Monday, March 16th, 2020. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council members Brown?
Here.
Colbrook?
Here.
Percy?
Here.
Jacobson?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Roberts?
Woo?
Here.
Mayor Merlin?
Here.
Next item is public input. In the interest of sanitation, we have not put cards out and back, but does anyone wish to address the Urbana City Council? Wayne, please come forward. Just please state your name very clearly for the record.
Hi, my name is Wayne Williams. I am the Cunningham Township Assessor and I am just coming to announce that I have closed my office to the public. Eighty-five percent of our walk-ins are seniors, which are one of the more vulnerable populations. I just want to remind everyone, all our seniors, that the deadline for returning the 2020 senior exemption form and the senior freeze form is December 31st, 2020. You can also mail those forms to the Champagne County Assessor. The address is 1776 East Washington in Urbana, 61802. Cunningham Township Assessor employees will still be able to answer requests for property record cards by email, by phone, and our brand-new website, www.ctao.us. Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne. Just for the viewing audience, I wanted to let you know that our city clerk is to your left, city staff is to the right, city council members are spaced out along the dais, and we have two council members who will be attending electronically. And our audience is social-distanced at about three to four feet from each other or more. So we are trying to conduct this meeting in a way that protects people's health to the greatest extent possible. Okay, we have one item of, is Dennis on yet?
Yeah, I'm here.
Great, welcome Dennis.
Yes, thanks.
We have one item of business on the agenda, and that is ordinance number 2020-03-015, which is a temporary emergency ordinance to address the COVID-19 virus pandemic. I'll introduce this. Jim Simon, city attorney, is available to answer questions and then have discussion.
Oh, I have a request of Dennis. Dennis, you're sharing your screen, which is filling up my entire screen. So can you turn off the screen?
All right, I'll try to unshare it. Being new to this program, we'll see what happens.
Yeah. I don't, I think you could do it without disconnecting yourself.
Okay. Because my screen has been closed.
Ah. Okay, well, I'll, all right, well, any case, okay, let's let it go for now. Let's let it go for now. Oh, yes, yay! Are you still there?
I'm still here, yes.
Okay.
Okay, it's freed, is it? Thank you.
It is a new world.
It's a new world.
We're all good to go?
Yeah.
Great, thank you. And I think we're using Zoom, is that correct?
Correct.
Great, okay. So, with yesterday's confirmation of Champagne County's first COVID-19 case and the news that there are 50 pending tests, we've entered a new phase of the deadly pandemic. The city of Urbana staff and I have been working very hard to plan and respond to this unprecedented crisis over the past few weeks. I wanted to let you know we're using the National Incident Management System, NIMS, that many of us were trained on by the Illinois Fire Service Institute. NIMS provides the framework and focus for our efforts, and that's particularly important when you have a million things coming at you every day, and this framework and system really helps you focus and stay focused on your top priorities. So, a number of people over the years in the cities have taken this training. It's a 40-week course, and it's coming in very useful. The city of Urbana has the following objectives. We will strongly support and cooperate in community efforts to slow the spread of the disease, protect the health of the community and our employees, and avoid overwhelming the healthcare system. We will maintain essential city functions and services for continuity of operations. We will also provide consistent communication with employees and the public, and we're documenting all expenses related to the pandemic response. One of the most important duties I have as your mayor is to issue a declaration of emergency, just as Governor Pritzker has done and many other mayors across the country. This declaration vests the mayor with some emergency powers and additional flexibility to face head-on the many different challenges that we'll confront throughout the course of this pandemic. Now, ordinarily, you'd turn to your city code and find the provisions for issuing the declaration of emergency and take your, and take it from there. Unfortunately, this section of our city code is very outdated. It would have taken too long to try to rewrite it, and we'd have to tie ourselves into a knot trying to adapt it to this situation. So instead, we drafted a standalone, temporary ordinance and temporary emergency declaration specific to this situation. Once we're through this emergency, I expect we'll be rewriting Section 6 so that future councils have it for their use. Hopefully, they will never have to use it again. Urbana's temporary emergency ordinance provides for us to conduct city council meetings electronically, cancel events if needed, and activities which could promote the spread of the disease, make purchases faster while still following all purchasing guidelines, temporarily perhaps adapt personnel policies that will keep people safe and the city functioning. This declaration of emergency also is required in order for us to be reimbursed for expenses related to our response efforts to COVID-19. Other topics in the ordinance include management of city facilities, extending time to pay fines, or making payments to the city. It provides for a succession plan in my absence, and it provides for other general powers that may be necessary for protecting public health and safety during this crisis. The legal term used in the ordinance is quote "police powers," but in this case, it means general governmental powers. Now, if I knew exactly what powers we'll need and when, we would have listed them individually in the ordinance, but unfortunately, we don't know. What we do know is this: Things are going to get worse, things will happen very fast, and the actions our community takes over the next few months will impact our lives for the rest of our lives. So today and going forward, we will need the ability to respond to changing circumstances and make decisions quickly. The general powers in the declaration of emergency will help us do that. The council, the city councilor and I, take this responsibility very seriously, and we seriously respect the authority that entrusts with us. And I also personally make the same promise to the city council and the people of Urbana that I made when I ran for city council and when I ran for mayor, and that is this: I will work as hard as I can to the best of my ability for the good of this community. Together, we'll move forward. Thank you. Are there questions for Jim Simon? Mary Alice?
Oh. If I remember correctly, the Code 6 pretty much talks about curfew, and I'm wondering if that is included in this emergency order?
There are actually two articles to Chapter 6 in our code. Article 1 is, as you correctly note, relates to curfews. Article 2 relates to natural and man-made disasters, and that's where we had hoped to try to invoke for this coronavirus situation, and hammering that situation out to fit this wouldn't work. The way this ordinance is drafted, it is temporarily a blanket replacement or stands alone, separate from Chapter 6. I think the, one of the very first statements says, "Section 2, the mayor shall be and hereby is vested with power and authority provided in this temporary emergency ordinance, notwithstanding anything to the contrary provided in Urbana City Code, Chapter 6, Article 2." So it only relates to Article 2. The curfew powers, as described in Article 1, still applies.
Thank you. Other questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
So the, this document specifies that meetings of the city council may be done electronically. Now, the governor now has issued a new order that all meetings, subject to Open Meetings Act, can be done electronically. And so I would assume, but I just want to ask, whether this also pertains to boards and commissions? May they now be held electronically without violating the Open Meetings Act?
Yes, they may be, because a public body is defined in the Open Meetings Act as not only the city council, but its boards and commissions, or boards and commissions of the city. So yes, you are correct. The suspension of the Open Meetings Act requirement of physical presence, as provided in Section 6 of today's executive order by Governor Pritzker, would apply to our boards, commissions, task force, what have you.
And we'll be looking at all our board and commission meetings, and of course, only the ones that are absolutely essential to city functioning for the next few weeks will be held. The rest will be canceled, I expect. And this points up how fast things are changing and how fast things have changed between when this ordinance was written last Friday and today, and the governor is actually anticipating a lot of the things that we were looking at as well. So, so we're going to be seeing much more coming from the governor's office as well over the coming days.
So I've got a question.
Yes, Dennis.
So, in the temporary ordinance, under Section 4, city council meetings, during this period of emergency, council rules are hereby modified to require an affirmative vote of the majority of a quorum present electronically or physically at the meeting for the passage. So what we're saying is that we don't have to have a physical quorum present, but we can do one electronically and physically.
It used to be you had to have a physical quorum, a quorum physically present, but the governor's order now overrides that. So we can all call in and not have to be physically present.
I see, okay.
Well, I guess I would point out that the president now has said, is discouraging, I guess it's not a law, but it's discouraging, any gathering of more than 10 people. And if we have seven members of the city council, plus the mayor is eight, plus the clerk is nine, plus council is 10, plus the city administrator is 11, so it sounds as though we should simply go to electronic meetings.
That's a logical conclusion. Mary Alice?
So I realize that things are changing daily, if not hourly, and everything hasn't been figured out, but I would like to know if you have any thoughts in terms of the plans to make these meetings available to the public? Will they be audio? Will they be video? Will they be a combination of both, or is that still under discussion?
It's under discussion. If we are all attending electronically, there won't be video, really, so it looks like there will be an audio. There has to be an audio recording, so.
If you're using Zoom, you can record it. It can be recorded as a video.
Oh, okay.
The governor's, Section 6 of its, of today's executive order does strongly encourage, if possible, video. Obviously, electronic can't be done that way, but also audio. So I'm sure an audio recording will be made and made available within a reasonable period of time after the meeting.
And we'll do our best with video. We just haven't.
I would point out, although we're not utilizing it right now, Zoom does have video capability, so that it has the capability so that whoever is speaking would, video would become available, and then anybody, like on the council, who wants to speak, can raise their hand, and then the video would shift to them. That doesn't seem to be activated in this session, but that is part of Zoom.
Well, I think we're going to get some practice with Zoom. Sharice, and then Bill.
The main question that I had with, when reading this, I've got all of my notes and stuff at home, but there's something in here that talks about what a bona fide, here it is, "All such meetings shall be deemed in response to an event constituting a bona fide emergency," under Section 2 of the Open Meetings Act. And I guess what I was wondering is what the definition of bona fide emergency is.
It's not easily defined. It's a case-by-case circumstance. In fact, Section 2.02A of the Open Meetings Act doesn't contain a reference to bona fide emergencies. It talks about notices of emergency meeting, period. A bona fide emergency would be what one could, a reasonable person could characterize as an emergency. As the governor issues more executive orders, including the one that, the ones that have been issued, and following the president's guidelines of no more than 10 gathering in a public place together, I think, given the COVID-19 situation, that what we are involved with right now at this moment, both here at the council, as well as throughout the city and the country, would be considered truly a bona fide emergency.
Okay. I didn't know if, when I was reading the code, so much of it just deals with a possible nuclear attack, or possible this, that, and thus, and nothing talks about biochemical or bio, or biologic situation or event that may, that may occur. So that's why I was wondering, because of the fact that it seems so narrow in its, in what it says. It's like, so what is bona fide?
It dates back to the Cold War and actually at the state level, too, which is why the language, everything needs to be updated.
Yes, okay.
And that's why after a day of working on trying to shoehorn something into Article 2 of Chapter 6, frankly, I gave up on it and realized it's just not going to work. And with the mayor and the city administrators' help, we crafted this provision as a standalone provision.
And I would emphasize that this ordinance applies only to the situation we're in now. So it's a temporary ordinance specific to this situation. Bill?
Yeah, I'd be very disappointed if we didn't meet physically, at least somebody be here. And part of that is because, I mean, I meet electronically on Zoom several times a week for work. It works fine. We have a small group or a large group. I meet with one group that's over 50 sometimes, and it actually works pretty well. But we have an obligation to the public to be open, and especially in tense situations, we need to show transparency, we need to show clear objectives, and I would be very disappointed if it wasn't open so that anybody could come in and participate in the meeting. They wouldn't have to have a computer, wouldn't have to have a special cellphone, wouldn't have to set up software. So I'd be very disappointed if we didn't have a physical presence. And I'll just, I'll just say, as far as the public health aspect, that's a recommendation of 10. I understand how that's calculated, but with the safeguards we have in place here, I think you have to take into consideration the social distancing that we're doing, and it's proven to be success, proven to be effective. So I would be disappointed not to have a physical presence.
Bill?
I guess I've got a statement and a question. So my statement is, you know, you had mentioned that the situation that we're in with the pandemic, pending pandemic, is unknown, what the future holds. And I think we could all probably agree that, you know, two weeks ago, nobody knew that the NBA season was going to be suspended, or Major League Baseball, you know, was going to be suspended, or, you know, all the things, the big things in life that we enjoy are now put on hold. And this is bigger than what any of us thought, you know, probably, you know, a month ago, two months ago. And I guess my question is, with this ordinance, you're just asking to strip away some of the typical restrictions that are placed on government, the protections, in order to specifically deal with this one situation, this one situation only, in order to basically serve the citizens of Urbana better by being able to do some of the, you know, the provisions that you have put in here, whether it be human resources or purchasing, or, you know, the Meetings Act. Is that correct?
Well, I wouldn't even say strip away, because the basic protections we have in our human, with human resources personnel, with the financial system, they will still be there. It just makes it a little more flexible. It gives us a little more flexibility.
Thank you, Ben.
Jared?
Just one clarification, Jim, because this is part of an amendment we're going to offer later to this ordinance. We were going with consideration that the bona fide emergency is going to, I'm not sure exactly how declaring it affects the OMA, and without knowing for sure, I am offering something in my amendment that has to do with notice. And it is my, my understanding that in declaring that, some of the rules, I'm not sure if it's all of them, or if there is another section of the OMA that deals with the bona fide emergency situation, but my question to you is, how is notice affected when we declare a bona fide emergency as far as the OMA is concerned? Because it's my understanding that we do not have to follow the same rules because it is a bona fide emergency, and that's the whole point of declaring it. Can you comment on that?
Yes, actually, it's interesting because under public meeting in the Open Meetings Act, which is Section 2, they do not talk about the statute, and that section does not talk about emergencies. However, in 2.02, deals with notices of meetings. And towards the end of Section A, there is an indication of, "Notice of an emergency meeting shall be given as soon as practicable, but in any event, prior to holding of such meeting, to any news medium which has filed an annual request for notice under subsection B of this section." I assume all our news media, I think our city clerk could answer that, but all our news, and he's nodding his head, have filed such a request. So before we could hold a meeting, at least the media, public media must be notified. Obviously, we also, if we're going to notify media, I can't believe we'd have a problem not posting it on our website. So it would be posted on the website. The standard problem that they're really thinking of is the, or in trying to address with this exception, is the 48-hour rule, where a notice has to be posted 48 hours. In fact, this meeting, we met that. For this meeting, we met that. Normally, that would allow us to post up to 6:59 PM on a Saturday to make the, you know, 48 hours, because it's not weekdays or business days, but calendar days. So it's really addressed through the notice.
Okay. I think that, from what I'm hearing, there is no specific condition under the bona fide emergency. It's just what you listed. There are not a timing constraint, but a notification as far as media sources are concerned, prior to the meeting.
If I understand your question right, well, let me first start with bona fide emergency. We put in the word bona fide rather than just sticking with the language of the Open Meetings Act of just an emergency. I, when I mean a bona, what I meant when I inserted that in there was that when there is to be an emergency meeting, some kind of a statement, a one-sentence statement indicating, you know, why it's such an emergency to call the meeting with less than 48 hours' notice. But we still, before we can have the meeting, we must give some kind of notice.
Sure.
And I assume we can give electronic notice to the media that's requested, the annual request by the media for such notice. So a notice could go out, let's say, in the morning. We're having a meeting that night. I think your meeting that night would be valid.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
I don't have the list in front of me, but I'll make a motion that we approve the emergency ordinance. I don't know if somebody has the exact ordinance number. Would like to read it into the record.
Jared's second. The ordinance number is 2020-03-015.
I'll second it.
Moved by Jared, seconded by Bill C. Any discussion? Bill, B.
Yeah, I think this is appropriate under the circumstances. I think, you know, we're in the middle of early stages of, we don't really know what yet, because we just don't have enough information. We're kind of in the fog of war, I think. You know, we don't have enough good data, good clean data to analyze. The people are trying to extrapolate things and base things on a variety of different assumptions and coming up with wide ranges of, you know, how long it's going to last, how bad it's going to be. So I think we just need to, you know, everybody needs to kind of chill for a couple of weeks, and I think we're learning more every day. I work with people that work on this every day, epidemiologists, pathobiologists. I'm very impressed with them. I don't do it myself, but I get to go to their noon seminars and get a free lunch, and I am so impressed with the quality of research on this campus, and I'm sure that it's the same all over. People are working on this very hard. So I'm sure we'll, and there have been good papers published online in pre-press where you get to comment on them, you get to read them, and the people are learning stuff every day. They, there are therapeutics that can be used in the late stages, but, you know, there's a problem getting enough of everything, so, and I don't know what I'm talking about, so don't quote me on that, but, you know, I observe things. Anyway, I'm just really impressed with the work that's going on, and I think we need to be patient. There's still a lot to learn, and we need to let the science catch up. I'm also real impressed with the neighborhood groups that have put together efforts to help other neighbors and be prepared to help other neighbors, and, you know, suggestions about what to do with your kids. People also need to understand the city is very busy. They're putting together a lot of plans right now. They will be busy for quite a while. We never had extra staff to begin with, so some of these things are best done by neighborhood groups. You know, the best suggestion I saw so far was somebody said, just, you know, here's a template for a letter. Take it around to your neighbors on your block and tell them you're available to, you know, go grocery shopping or something. It's just going to be a block-by-block helping your neighbor sort of thing for a while. And we just need to kind of get through the first few weeks, see what the, see what, see what we learn. I'm also real impressed with everybody's in town, how much they've learned. I don't know if that's because of the social media, or, you know, the internet access, but hearing people use terms correctly, like flatten the curve, and, you know, "are not." How many people knew what "are not" was three weeks ago? Social distancing, things like that. So I'm really encouraged by people's response, for the most part. You know, there's the hoarding and who knows what, but people do get scared, and I think it's our responsibility to make sure that we're open about everything, and, and we're going to get through this together. So I will support this.
I would like to make a suggestion on item 13, and it's, it's an addition of a second paragraph that might read, "Any order undertaken by this article will require notice to be given to the city council prior to or at the time of action being taken, and for the action to remain in force, it must be ratified by majority vote of the city council at its subsequent Monday meeting." And, and I hope you understand, this is not offered in any, you know, in any sense of doubting the wisdom of the actions that will be taken, but it is to maintain the role of the city council in, you know, advising and consenting to the mayor's action.
Jared?
Eric, if I, if I might, I don't know if it was circulated to you prior to the meeting, but I did have some extended language that we had drafted for it, and I think, if you wouldn't mind that I read it, and perhaps you can, we can offer it together in motion or in second. or in second, and the spirit shall be there. I think we're, we're all essentially on the same page, but here, let me read what I've got in front of us. This is, should have been distributed via email to you. Each of us has a copy of it, including the mayor and the city clerk, here in front of us. So it reads in Section 13, under other emergency powers, after the initial sentence, it would read, "Any order undertaken by this article will require notice to be given to the city council prior to or at the time of any action being taken. The city council shall have the authority by majority vote to suspend or amend any action taken under this article within 48 hours of notice being given of any such action. A special meeting to vote on any action taken under the powers vested in this article shall only require a declaration by four city council members to the city clerk of the intention of the council to hold a vote. A special meeting will be noticed and scheduled as soon as is reasonably possible once notice has been given to the city clerk." I offer that to you in, in spirit for your second. I know we probably have a discussion that needs to be held about how quickly we would hold the vote after notice was given, but if you would be open to it, I would either be happy to second your motion, or if you would be happy to second mine, however you see fit to move forward.
Well, let's, let's discuss it a bit and see what, you know, our colleague sense is. I'll, I'll just say why I, I had, I did, I did have your wording in hand.
Okay.
I didn't have a chance to get back to you with this alternative suggestion, but the, the reason that I'm, and of course, the first sentences are identical. It's just the second, it's just after that first sentence that there's a difference. And what I'm proposing is really that the following city council action be routine, that it does not require the, the council to say, oh, my gosh, we want to, you know, we want to call this into question, but it would be routine in the sense that any of the mayor's or the staff's proposals, even in non-emergency case, are routine. We, we automatically consider a regular meeting, but the difference is that in the emergency, the mayor may take action and put things in force without waiting for the council. But this says, okay, that's fine, we agree with that, but let's have the council now review that at its subsequent Monday meeting and, and decide if we, if we really agree with that. So that's, that's the spirit of mine, as opposed to, as opposed to having a special procedure and a special meeting being called or not for, for mayor's emergency action.
Well, I guess before either of us would offer an official amendment, then we can just discuss this item.
Right.
So I hear what you're saying with the, we'll just have it as a regular item, we will discuss it no matter what happens at the next meeting. That's generally the spirit, rather than either we will or we won't, we have to make a declaration to do so if we so choose so.
Right.
Is that what I understand?
That, that's exactly right. I, I wanna, I wanna make it a more routine action, as opposed to taking special action to question what the mayor did.
Okay.
I have a question about that, then. Would the stipulation that the city council, four members of the city council become proactive to request that review, but apparently, this is what I think Jared, you were asking for, that there would be four people who would contact the city council or the mayor from the city council to request that this be voted upon? And then Eric's comment would be that we would review these actions as a regular form of business at our next meeting? Is that the definition of the difference between the two proposals?
That, that sounds correct to me, Dennis.
Yeah, me too.
Ours would, the wording that I have would require council to give notice of intention to review.
Yeah.
Eric's would review by default.
Yeah, okay.
Eric, can you clarify? Would your review include the option to amend or suspend?
Yeah, the, the council could, could take such actions, sure.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
And, you know, again, please, it, it, this, all that I'm trying to do here is, is retain, even though it's an emergency, the ordinary balance of powers that we have between the mayor and the council.
Mary Alice?
So I'm wondering if we can combine these so that the intent is that it will always appear on the city council agenda at the next scheduled meeting, but if you have four council members who seem that, feel that it needs to come to a meeting beforehand within 48 hours, we have the ability to do that. So it's just a combination of that.
That was gonna be my, my suggestion, Eric, that we would include both languages, yours as the primary, and then mine as an or.
Sure.
It could be by default, or we would be able to call it prior to that meeting, should we deem it necessary.
I have no objection to that.
Okay.
And I would appreciate the fact that there wouldn't have to be a special meeting called, because those take staff time and effort, and that's in precious quantity when we're now.
In an emergency, for example.
In an emergency, that's in special, in short quantity. Does the clerk have enough information? No.
So, Charlie, I think I can sum up.
I, I need actual wording, because we're gonna put this, we're gonna finish writing this tonight.
Sure. Eric, you have your, your language, which would have been probably the third paragraph or the third section after, or I guess it would have been the second one, correct? But it also includes some of the language that I have in that one?
So, so here's what I propose to do. I will email to Charlie right now my, my wording to constitute the second paragraph.
Technology.
And then, and then you can actually walk across the room and deliver to Charlie or email to your wording for the third paragraph.
Okay. Let us know when you, when you've got it under, underway to Charlie.
So to, so to summarize, so I, for the viewing public, the, the special action taken by the mayor would be done, but the council would automatically review it at the next regular council or committee of the whole meeting.
Or have the option to call a special meeting.
Or have the option to call a special meeting.
To review it.
With four council members.
Calling for the meeting.
Bill?
I've got a question, I guess, as the practical application of this. I mean, I obviously appreciate, you know, council oversight, you know, over, over actions, but just a, a what if? If we put something like this in place, and I just would like somebody, you know, to explain to me, I guess, the fallout, you know, when it comes to like purchases. Let's say, for instance, you know, the mayor, you know, and staffers think that we need to buy X amount of PPE, and it's, and we need it right now, and, and we, as a city, expend funds in, in that emergency based on the, you know, the, you know, the new ordinance. And then we gather as a council, and collectively, we decide, no, that wasn't a good idea. Then, then what happens with, with that, with that purchase?
Bill, I think the, what we're talking about is an amendment specific to Section 13, so this would have to be an action undertaken specifically with powers vested in Section 13. A PPE purchase or purchases in general would be covered, covered under Section 7 of this ordinance, so they would not, this would not apply in that, in that situation. We would not be, we're not seeking to check every power in the ordinance, just the other emergency powers. So the, this amendment only applies to actions taken under that, not under any other section. Does that make sense?
Well, it does, but I guess I don't understand what the other powers that you would be concerned about.
Did you have a chance to review the, the memo provided?
I did.
In the press review?
I did.
With the, like, what this does allow us to do and what it doesn't allow us to do?
I did.
Okay. In section, and we were gonna get into this, I think, we were gonna ask Jim to elaborate a little bit on what exactly that meant, you know, we, this was brought up primarily as a response to let the public know that we saw what happened in the City of Champaign with their Exhibit A in Section 10 of the ordinance they passed that was very similar to this, and we wanted to make it perfectly clear to everyone in the City of Urbana that the city council saw a flaw in that, in that resolution and saw a flaw in that ordinance that we did not want folks to think we were choosing to repeat, that we take very seriously those powers that are given to the mayor to, and we don't list a specific thing as that Exhibit A did, we're saying, these are all the things that the mayor has the power to do, so we probably need a little bit of clarification from the city attorney as to what those, what those things are, but without getting into the specifics of what they do and do not allow, we felt that it would be necessary to show the viewing public that we have a direct check on, on those powers that were of such concern to folks in the City of Champaign when that ordinance was passed. And that's the, that's the spirit of it. We weren't thinking necessarily of what it does and what it doesn't do, because we have a power to check it. But we would appreciate elaboration, Jim.
Jim?
I think I'm happy to give you one. If you read it, it talks about general police powers to protect public health and safety within the city. Police powers is not a reference to police department powers. Very simply and hopefully succinctly, it's a reference to enforcing ordinances or state law. It can be by the fire department in terms of occupancy levels, it could be CD in terms of special event permits, it could be the liquor, local liquor commissioner in terms of liquor licenses, it could be the police department. But it has to be directed towards public health and safety, not specifically directed at, let's say, guns. I mean, yeah, mayor does not have the power to in any way control guns. One, we don't license guns. The state licenses with FOID cards and concealed carry cards, that kind of thing. The problem is, is as both of you have articulated, we don't know what is coming down the pipe. It could be suddenly mass riots over schnucks over a box of diapers. It could be food shortages, where maybe the mayor decides to issue an order with a little bit of rationing, so the existing food supply that's present at that moment, you know, can serve more people. We, we just don't know, now I'm making these potentials up. Conceptually, I fully understand what the city council's concerned about, and I appreciate that. I will offer one further comment. There will possibly be some actions, to use a phrase most people are familiar with, where you can't unring a bell. It may be a one-time action to stem some type of act or omission that needs to be addressed right then and there, and it's addressed. An hour later, or a week later, when the council or committee meets, it becomes very difficult to say, now we have to undo that. Now, if it's a standing order that has more than momentary or, you know, short duration, yes, of course, that can be modified or repealed and, and all. And frankly, notwithstanding anything in this ordinance, because the council's being asked to approve it, and it cannot go into effect until you approve it, if you do, you always have the power to modify the temporary ordinance. As, as time goes on, and we all gain more experience with how this thing's gonna work, the council may come back, special meeting, regular meeting, you know, however you choose to call it, and you can amend it. That is a policy question, depending on what the amendment is, but clearly, more likely than not, it's, it's a policy question. My guess with all of this is, the governor is kind of out ahead of an awful lot of people in this whole area, where he has been providing a lot of policy and executive orders regarding conduct, like the closing of restaurants and bars and food halls, starting to, I believe it's tonight at nine o'clock, for, you know, on-premises consumption and offering alternatives. Other states and other cities are doing the same thing and all, but I think he came out in advance of that, and our ordinance would give the mayor that power, but obviously, at this point, she doesn't need to exercise that power.
Just add one further comment, just to address your question, Bill, in that we don't ever expect to need to take any action as to this. It's a failsafe, if you will. Yes, it certainly can be a situation where it was something that required immediate action, and it's already overdone with, and there is nothing for us to do about it. But it's a failsafe nonetheless, and I believe it was necessary to add that language to help folks understand that we're taking the power that we're vesting in the mayor and the city very seriously.
I'd like to make a comment.
Dennis?
To, and I think that somewhat this is a, there's kind of a difference between an event that might happen in the public that would require immediate attention, whether it be through the fire or the, or the police department, or some change in regulation, but we're probably not gonna be doing proactively making up new regulations to initiate further change ourselves, but only with the consent of both the mayor and the city council.
Any other comments? Sharice?
I just wanna say, 'cause Jared and I had some conversation too over the weekend, but the one thing that I think that is important about putting this in place is we are really counting on our government, meaning the people of Urbana, to care about the city enough and care about each other enough, that they, we won't ever have to put anything, we won't ever have to do anything drastic to, to make sure that everyone in this city is safe. And the, the main thing with having this temporary ordinance is for the safety of the citizens of Urbana, and so for their health and for the health of their families. So the, the governor has put a lot of things in place. As Jim said, we may never, you know, there are powers and policies in, in this temporary ordinance that may never come to fruition, but because of, of how our governor has been so forward-thinking and open-minded in where he sees the possibility of, of where this disease can go and what it can cause, and I, but I think that it would, it would be to our deficit if we didn't have something in place, at least, so that we can say, well, this, this is what we need to do to help keep our city safe. And I think that it's very important that everyone in this city, and anybody who's watching, listening to the, to this, it's, it's so important that you buy into how this is going, and that you understand, we're not trying to cut anybody's rights off, we're not trying to do any of that. What we're trying to do is make sure that you live, and make sure that your neighbor is healthy, and make sure that, you know, people in your family are healthy. That's one of the most important things that we can do as city government, is to keep our citizens safe.
And our other responsibility is to keep our employees safe, and to keep government running and functioning and providing the core services that everybody depends on. and providing the core services that everybody depends on in this crisis. So we're all first responders, and that individual behavior determines the outcome of this, this thing. And, and then we, we absolutely, our top priority is to keep this city functioning for all of you.
Any other comments? Jared?
Just for clarification of moving forward, Charlie, do you have from Eric? Does it, with what he has and what we've said, do you have a clear idea of our intention?
Let me read what Eric has, has stated here. Eric, is your intention that this replaces the second paragraph in the version provided by Councilman Miller?
I think we're including both.
No, my intention is that this would be the second paragraph, and then the wording from Jared.
Ah, okay, so this gets inserted. Okay, this gets inserted.
Yeah, yeah, this gets inserted. Yeah, mine gets inserted.
Okay, so the, the language we've received from Eric is that "Any order undertaken by this article will require notice to be given to the city council prior to or at the time of any action being taken. For action to remain in force, it must be ratified by a majority vote of the city council at its subsequent regular meeting."
Sounds fine.
I think what would follow is just the word additionally. "The city council shall have the authority by majority vote to suspend or amend any action taken under this article within 48 hours of notice," so on and so forth, through the language that remains in mind.
Jim wants to add, notwithstanding something.
No, I'm not going to stand, and I'm not going to withstand either. What I am going to suggest is where you reference the word article, and I think it's two places, you change that to section. There are no articles in this particular ordinance.
I meant to change that before I sent that out, but yes.
A section.
They are sections, not articles.
So the third paragraph about four council members being required, is that now deleted?
No, that would still remain.
So that's?
For the call of the special, for a call of the special meeting.
Instead of the regular meeting?
Correct.
So you want, you want an option to have either go to the next regular meeting or if you're so horrified, you want to be able to call a special meeting?
That's correct.
Gotcha, okay. Okay. Do we have it, Charlie?
Yeah, I, okay, so the new third paragraph reads, "Additionally, the city council shall have the authority by a majority vote to suspend or amend any action under this arti, under this section, taken under this section within 48 hours of notice being given of such action." And then the other two, where's, is there another section in here?
Yeah, it's in the next sentence.
A special meeting to vote?
Vested in this section. Shall only require a declaration by four council members, the city clerk of the intention of the council.
Oh, okay, I see it, okay, section, okay. I think so, okay. So now, the next would be somebody to move and second this and then discussion on the amendment.
I'll make a-
I've got a question first.
Yeah, go.
Is there any way, just for clarity, you can, now that those on-the-fly amendments have been made, can you read it from the top to bottom so we know what we're voting on?
Sure. Section 13, other emergency powers. "The mayor pursuant to her general police powers to protect public health and safety within the city of Urbana shall have the power and authority to issue general orders that have force and effect of law." Paragraph two. Give me a second to pull it up. "Any order undertaken by this article will require notice to be given to the city council prior to or at the time of any action being taken. For the action to remain in force, it must be ratified by majority vote of the city council at its subsequent regular meeting." Paragraph three. "Additionally, the city council shall have the authority by a majority vote to suspend or amend any action taken under this article, under this section, within 48 hours of notice being given of any such action. A special meeting to vote on any action taken under the powers vested in this section shall only require a declaration by four council members to the city clerk of the intention of the council to hold a vote." A special, fifth paragraph. "A special meeting will be noticed and scheduled as soon as reasonably possible once notice has been given to the city clerk."
I'm gonna make a motion that we amend Section 13 as stated.
I'll second.
It's moved by Jared, seconded by Mary Alice. Discussion?
Yeah, I guess Dennis Roberts here. So, yeah, I think it's appropriate to include the elected officials who represent the community in the availability to comment on or to modify any emergency declaration that has come into the community, mainly because it's the duty of aldermen to be responsive and to participate in the creation of the conditions that we're operating under. And while we're not taking away from the ability of the mayor to be proactive and quick responding to the time and place of a possible emergency, it's always good to have the ratification by the elected officials to either support or to question as it proceeds.
Any other comments? All those in favor, Jared?
Just one more. We didn't discuss it, but just as to make it clear through our media sources and reporting as it happens on this, this is an additional check that is added into this ordinance. We didn't discuss it specifically, but this ordinance also has another check in that the city council at any time may vote to rescind the entire emergency ordinance. So we have one blanket check on the ordinance. We have just added an additional check on a specific action that can be taken under Section 13 in this ordinance. And just wanted that to be clear that we have two checks on the power vested in this ordinance given to the city council.
All those in favor, please say aye, and this is a vote on the amendment alone?
Aye.
All those opposed? That passes. Further discussion?
So in addition to Section 13, we had looked at, Jared and I had spoken about Section 14, which is in the absence or incapacity of the mayor. Currently, the procedure, so that the public knows if the mayor is indisposed or unavailable, then the mayor pro tem steps in and is in pla, not in place, but is in the stead of the mayor. And then it goes to the wards and order of the wards. So we have seven wards in Urbana. Based on this, I think it's appropriate that we follow this. This is Section 226 in the city code. I realize that we have, at the moment, let me step back for a second. In this ordinance, right now, the order is the mayor. And then it says, "The mayor may delegate such powers and authority to the city administrator or such other person as the mayor may delegate who may take actions, such actions, as are provided in the temporary emergency ordinance. Similarly, in the absence or incapacity of the city administrator, such powers and authority shall devolve to the human resources and finance director." So I'd like to put up for discussion changing that language, removing everything after how the order would take place. I, I'd like to say first off that I really appreciate, I think the staff has done a fabulous job coming together, putting together plans. I know the fire department, the police department, everybody is working very hard to ensure the safety not only of our first responders, but also of our public. So this is in no way to say that our staff is incapable of this, but our staff will be in place, hopefully, as long as there isn't anything unforeseen. So this is more about who has the ability to move the city forward with all of the city staff. So the city administrator, the, the human resource and finance director, hopefully, will still be in those positions. So I'm not trying to remove those people, but I, I would like to hear a conversation about keeping the order from Section 226 in the city code.
Bill?
Well, my understanding is if there was a temporary absence or incapacity, actually, both would happen. So maybe I need clarification on that. Both the, I mean, the, the powers, especially, in this, in this order would go, as it says, to the city administrator or other such person as the mayor may delegate. But the mayoral powers or mayoral position would go to the mayor pro tem because that's in our city code if the mayor becomes incapacitated.
You are correct.
Okay.
The reason it was written, can I, I'll explain, the reason it was written this way. This, this is, this situation is different than anyone has ever experienced. I mean, you've heard that over and over again. And we have the, you know, we're two weeks into our planning, more than two weeks, but our, into our official NIMS. The people, the city administrator, the finance director have all been trained in this particular framework. It takes a long time to get up to speed. Given the amount of information that we have received in the past few weeks, I just felt it was very important for continuity of operations to have the, the people in this position going forward. But yes, of course, the mayor pro tem would be, would be assuming duties. Jared?
Just a comment on that. So I thought about the context of it after you responded to our inquiry about it. And I, it made me think of the president and vice presidents, if you will, in that our mayor pro tem is in some form or fashion our vice president. I feel you're shaking your head that you wouldn't agree with that analogy.
Let's choose a different analogy.
Well, you're, I, I'm just thinking, you know, if the president is incapacitated or-
But pro tem is temporary. If, if there was a permanent incapacitation, you would appoint a new mayor from the council.
Okay. I guess, okay, fair enough.
Necessarily have to be the mayor pro tem.
I got you. So Andy, oh, this is my bad analogy. I guess it just came to mind that I thought that we should, at the very least, now that we're in this situation, I guess we even, you know, three weeks ago didn't think we would be here today, that either through, you know, a change in this section or just as principled as we move forward, that we need to ensure that we have an elected official who is on the level, who can assume duties. You know, when you said, there's so much catching up to do, there's so many things that that person is not going to be trained to be ready to respond to and talk about and learn about when they assume the position, like probably true, but that also means that all of the other elected officials are kind of kept out of the loop as far as what's going on behind the scenes. There isn't even one of us that would know necessarily what to do should the mayor lose the ability to be the mayor. And that, that is concerning. And I think that's something we need to reconsider as we're thinking about the role of the mayor pro tem in serving as mayor pro tem, especially in, now that we've come to be in this situation. And not just as a, like, let's think about it when we rewrite the section of the city code somewhere down the line, but it probably means action now that we have somebody getting trained up from an elected position in the city to be able to step in should something happen and be able to be the mayor pro tem and not just there to talk to reporters about what the city is doing without knowing what's really going on. Do you understand what I'm, what I'm getting at? I'm not saying we need to change the language, I'm just saying we have no elected officials ready to step in.
I can assure you that, never mind.
So I can comment on that, Grath, as the mayor pro tem. So I have made myself available by email and the conversation to the mayor to be at hand at any time, to be briefed or to assist during this time of trial here in the city. And so far, the mayor felt that, well, perhaps she can address it, but she said that she would consider that or take that under consideration as she would try to understand what she wanted to accomplish next. So, but I would be willing and ready to, to come in as part of a team to do that because it would probably be my responsibility in any case as the mayor, if the mayor were to come down ill herself and to be in some way incapacitated or isolated to, you know, help. And certainly, I'm willing to do that. Or anybody who would be elected official because it would also potentially devolve to, according to the ordinance that we have standing, which would be Section 2-26, that should the mayor pro tem also be incapacitated, the responsibility of the office temporarily would go to the aldermen of Ward 1, Ward 2, Ward 3 in succession, depending on who was available. And I think it is important to have an elected official at the very top or very close to the top of the decision-making process because staff are not elected. They might be highly trained, but there needs to be a representation of the elected people here in the community, I think.
This is, this is Eric, and I have a few different reactions to this clause, this section, and this discussion. My strongest reaction is, Diane, take care of yourself, please, we need you more than ever.
The rumors of my demise are greatly exaggerated.
But then my second, my second thought is, and I'm echoing Dennis here, the concern about moving this degree of responsibility from an elected person to an appointed person. Now, I actually just looked up the presidential succession. And so maybe all of you already know this. So of course, it's the vice president, then it's the speaker of the house, then it's the president pro tem of the senate, and then it's cabinet officials, appointed officials, obviously. So, you know, there's, now, of course, we've never gotten down that list. But I think that we have, you know, we've just put an amendment to this that provides the council with the ability to, you know, to approve, to advise and consent to the actions, to the emergency actions of the prime person. And I think I'm persuaded, on balance, you know, despite my concerns about having an appointed person so high in the list of succession, I think I'm persuaded by the fact that we are in an emergency situation. Things may change very, very rapidly. We may have particular things happening if there's a tremendous surge in cases, for example, of COVID-19 in Champaign County. There's a whole lot of things that could happen really fast. And so I am inclined to support this section. I, I've gone back and forth on this. I know I've had conversations with Mary Alice about it. But on balance, I'm inclined, with the other safeguards we have, to support this section as it is written.
Any other comments? Mary Alice?
So the conversation between Bill Culbrick and Jared in regards to the previous amendment talked about when does this apply? Section 13. So Section 13 are any other emergency powers. So I would be more inclined to support the existing language if we also put in language that the person needs to be approved by city council at the next meeting because that is the same that we said in Section 13. And that would give us the ability to have comment and the ability to affirm.
Bill?
So, I mean, I'm thinking of situations, you know, where it might be applied. And if it's a short absence where the mayor is out of town or something, somebody has to be in charge and can't wait around for a vote.
And we call the mayor pro tem will be signing any, anything that comes down.
This happens at the same time. So mayor pro tem would be the significant person that signs things, just like they are now when you go out of town. If it became incapacitated, then- If it became incapacitated, then that sounds like more of a permanent thing. So then there's a different process, you know, then you'd, then you'd have to replace the mayor, and there's a succession that has nothing to do with the succession that's listed as the pro tem succession. That's all just temporary stuff for temporary absences.
Well, you know, I'm sorry.
Mary Alice, and then Eric.
So I guess my, my question is, is Section 14 at the moment designates the city administrator as the first in line to do this emergency order. So all the power for the emergency order that we are considering tonight would then go to the city administrator and not to the mayor pro tem because of Section 14. So I think it's important for us to have language in Section 14, if we're going to keep it existing here, that within a week, that there is a vote at city council to affirm once again that the city administrator is given the power to do this emergency ordinance.
Bill?
I actually like the suggestion by Mary Alice of, you know, we, if we put something in Section 13 for advising consent, oversight by the council, just for the sake of consistency, if there's something that is out of the ordinary that happens, you know, to city personnel, I think, like I said, for the sake of consistency, being able to come back a week later at the next council meeting and just being able to give that advice and consent and either agree or disagree, just, just for consistency.
Would you propose someone have language for Charlie?
Oh, boy.
And the reason we're doing this is I'm going to sign this tonight after it's voted on, because there are things we have to do tomorrow that's authorized in this.
I will ask the city clerk to assist me, but I will say, Section 14, the first paragraph stays as is. The second paragraph would be the language that Eric inserted into Section 13. So the city clerk, would you be willing to state that again for us?
I think the relevant would be the second sentence of Eric's paragraph, which would say, "For the action to remain in force, it must be ratified by a majority vote of the city council at its subsequent regular meeting."
So all we need to do is substitute the word "action" with "appointment" to remain in force.
Yeah, for the...
And...
For the...
Or the delegation.
Delegation, for the delegation.
To remain in force.
Let me write that down. For the delegation, for the delegation to remain in force, it must be ratified by a majority vote of the city council at a subsequent Monday meeting.
Perfect.
So my only question after that is, if it is not ratified by the city council, what happens? Should we go back to Section 226? I guess that's, I'm posing that as a question to council.
This is Eric. I think if the council doesn't ratify the delegation, then it's, then the responsibility falls to the council to replace it with something that works.
Well, fall back to your...
And yes, could come back to...
Section 226. And this is, this, just so the public understands, this is only for this particular situation.
Right.
All right, so, whoops, sorry.
So when we rewrite the code, this could be completely different.
We'll have a larger conversation.
Yes, and under less stressful circumstances. Charisse?
So I just, for clarification, what I, I just want to understand that we're going to keep the absence or incapacity, the, that first, the, the section that's already been written, in addition, we're adding to ensure the continuity of chief executive position in the absence or incapacity of mayor, Section 226 of the city code will be initiated. Correct?
No.
No.
Okay, so we're not adding, yeah, I'm...
No, that, that language is not being considered.
Okay, so what, okay, but what we are adding in is the, that the city council comes in and actually nullifies or...
Ratifies.
Ratifies the, the appointment that, in this, the way that it's written now, like, so if it's the city administrator that takes over, we can say yes or no, and if we say no, then we go to the mayor, the mayor pro tem.
Well, it would be at our direction.
So we would, we would determine if it would go to the mayor pro tem?
Yes.
Okay.
But in the meantime, the mayor pro tem is acting as the mayor pro tem.
And once again, has the city clerk, have you caught up yet? I know you're over there scribing very, very furiously.
Would you like to read?
Can I, can I make a motion and then let him read? Sure. Thank you. I, I'd like to make an amendment...
I'm incapacitated at this point.
I would like to make an amendment to Section 14, which discusses the absence or incapacity of the mayor. And I'll read the first part, and then the addition that we're adding to it is from the city clerk. So that in the absence or incapacity of the mayor, "The mayor may delegate such powers and authority to the city administrator, or such other person as the mayor may delegate, who may take such actions as are provided in this temporary emergency ordinance. Similarly, in the absence or incapacity of the city administrator, such powers and authority shall devolve to the human resources finance director." And then the second paragraph is?
"For the delegation to remain in force, it must be ratified by a majority vote of the city council at a subsequent regular meeting."
So I move approval of that amendment.
I will second it. You got it, Charisse.
All right.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Jared. Any further discussion?
I think, I'd just like to say that I think it's an appropriate addition because it allows the council to have a voice in who among potentially the elected officials assists in a significant way to help solve the issues of the day.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. That amendment passes. Is there a motion for the ordinance as a whole?
It's already on the floor.
It's on the floor?
It's already on the floor.
Moved by, was moved by Jared Miller, seconded by Councilman Culbrook.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Yeah.
Bill?
Since you mentioned it, can you give us a little idea of what, what types of things you need to do right away?
Can we vote on this first? Yes.
Yeah, I mean, as long as you do it during the meeting, that's fine, I don't care.
And you will be notified tomorrow when we do them. One would be related to city facilities. We're going to be starting after, well, starting tomorrow, we do have, this is a polling place tomorrow, we're going to be locking two of the three outside entrances, so the public will be, and all of us will be coming in the north door, and that will be in place for, you know, indefinitely, depending on, you know, circumstances. It may be that we eventually get to the point where the building is locked, is closed to the public, but at this point, we're going to keep one door open. We're advising people to call in advance, try to do as much as they can online. And the purpose behind that is to, and we're also making sure all of our employees are positioned behind glass, so there's, there's a physical barrier between them and the public, and still doing public business. So there's the police service window, finance window, city clerk, and then we're working it out, so CD is also protected in that way. What else is on the list? I'm going to be suspending issuing special or public event permits for the foreseeable future to discourage any large gatherings in the city. I'm also going to be suspending issuing temporary liquor licenses related to those special events, so that'll go into effect right away. What else do we have? We're working on internally on travel policy, on scrambling to get our remote working capability up and running. Turns out, there's no laptops available in the world, so we're going to plan B on that. And is there anything else? Yeah, Carol?
Parking meters.
Parking meters. Parking meters will not be enforced in the parking lot north of the city.
They're still enforcing them on campus. I gotta take it today.
I was, I was gonna do a yay for not on campus.
And we're also taking steps to accommodate the new reality for restaurants and bars, which we'll announce tomorrow, but it, it will involve begging, they have, restaurants would, or bars would have the choice of requesting meters to be begged in front of their establishments for free, and then that could be their pickup and drop-off zone.
Just to be, just to be clear, it's two parking meters?
Two parking meters.
Per establishment?
Yes, yeah, not the whole store.
So there's, okay, so there's room for somebody to drive up and pick up, some curb pickup?
Yes, safely.
That's great.
Yes. And this is thing, you know, these are just things that we've got to put in place tomorrow. So, so those are the types of things that people are going to see under, under this emergency ordinance. The, the Section 13 obviously would be a larger scale action that I really, I don't know what it can be, that, you know, there's a lot of stuff happening out there, but it would be designed to either promote the continuity of operations in the city, protect public safety, stop the spread of the virus. Depends, and a lot of that depends on the behavior also and the actions of every single resident in this community, so.
Thanks. I think it really demonstrates how we have to be flexible, and this would really help the flexibility. I know it's hard to keep up, but I think the sheriff has suspended evictions for a time period.
Court-ordered evictions for, through the end of the month.
Till the end of the month, and unemployment insurance, they've, you know, suspended the first week wait, so you don't have to wait to apply for unemployment insurance. We really have to watch out for our retail workers that are going to be affected, and, and, you know, people can start looking toward new, new jobs, like delivery and other online options and stuff. So there's, it's gonna be, there's gonna be a lot of changes in the economy if this continues a long time. So it's, it's nice to have the flexibility, and I'll support it.
We've also reached out to the Small Business Association, or Small Business Development Center and the Economic Development Corporation, and they're providing resources to the business community as well. So a lot of this we can't do, the city itself can't do, but we're trying to mobilize the resources in the community. But literally, it's, it, it, it's nonstop. So appreciate your support for this, and we'll try to keep you as informed as we can, but sometimes it's not until the end of the day that I actually get a chance to sit down and write an email.
And Mary? Also, we've learned now that the MTD has offered a response to the COVID virus. They're going to be offering free rides effective on Tuesday. They encourage all passengers to limit nonessential travel, and they recognize that there are people who must get to work and have errands to run. So they're trying to eliminate any, any barriers to access to free rides that, and other information that would be on their website. So I think it's important to let people know that very other, many other organizations and facilities within the community are also changing their patterns and trying to be cooperative as we face the challenges that are looking, we are looking at.
Well, the, the theme is we are in this together, and we have to get through this together, and we're going to learn a great deal from this experience. It will speed up a lot of, a lot of, a lot, a transition to, to many different things, like more online, more, I can't even, virtual meetings and that sort of thing, and probably get our locks updated in our buildings, so we have, we have a pass code or a pass entry rather than depending on physical keys. So we're gonna move, we're gonna move quickly.
Okay, I just have one comment that I want to make in the, in the spirit of flexibility that Bill was talking about and we're all talking about, and this is the quote, quote a pastor that I had, and he used to say, "Blessed are the flexible, for they will not be bent out of shape." So...
I love that.
We need to keep that in mind while we're going through all of this, I think.
And don't make a straight line crooked.
There you go.
Okay, are we ready to vote? Mary Alice?
I have just one quick statement. I just wanted to say that I'm always impressed by the conversation that we have at city council to try and make this the best ordinance that we possibly can. I think this is an excellent ordinance right now. It's unfortunate ordinance. We don't want to be passionate about this, but it's a necessary one, so I am in support of it.
Thank you. Will the clerk please call a roll?
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Culbrook?
Yes.
Percy?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
And also myself.
Dennis?
Hello?
Are you there, Dennis?
Yes, I say yes also.
Okay.
And, whoa.
Yes. That motion passes. With no further business before this meeting, it is adjourned, and it will be followed by the city council committee of the whole meeting chaired by Jared Miller.